Good evening and welcome to the February 15, 2022, meeting of the Chatham Select Board. This is a virtual participation meeting only. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021, signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, its general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, until April 1, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Our conference ID number is 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And welcome again. Everyone, please, as a reminder, mute your mic and shut off your cameras until you're participating. Okay, let's start with a roll call. Vice Chair Shereen Davis.
Present.
Okay, Clerk Cory Meters.
Present.
Select Board Member Dean DeCastro. That's okay.
Present. Sorry.
Select Board Member Jeff Dykens.
Present.
And the chair is present. Just in case you can't read it, it's Peter Kukolos. All right, let me give just a quick overview on our agenda. We're going to start with our minutes of February 8, then we'll have public announcements and agenda items. We'll then get into our new business. First up will be coronavirus update from Dr. Dunkinson and Town Manager Jill Goldsmith. We'll then have public comments on the following business agendas. And we'll start off with a review of four departments for our budget, and this is FY 2023 budget review. We'll then get into a vote on protective, excuse me, we'll discuss protective zoning bylaw, which is a referral. Our vote will be a referral to the planning board. And then we get into engaging legal counsel and authorize the town manager to sign an engagement letter for the airport council. Then have a discussion on a vote on our administrative order, number five, filed on January 21, 2022. And then we get into committee appointments for Parks and Rec Commission and Park and Rec Commission and the Board of Health. And then, again, the town manager's December monthly report. And I'll just remind everyone that's on the town website. It comes out every month, and it's a good background for us all. Okay, so first thing we have are the minutes for February 8, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve?
Still moved. Tagging.
Okay, yeah, that, any changes, additions, comments? I didn't have any either. Okay, let's have a vote. Go around the other way. Shereen.
Aye.
Cory.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And next up are public announcements and agenda item requests. Anything from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Shereen.
Friday, I attended the virtual meeting of the Cape Town Island Select Board and Counselors Association, and the Housing Assistant Corporation made a presentation on their new program to assist homeowners with permitting, going through the process of an ADU. And I was wondering, in light that we're doing renewal, you know, a revision of our ADUs bylaw, maybe we could invite Housing Assistant Corp. to tell us a little more about their program. It'd be a nice benefit for our townspeople to see that there's assistance out there outside of the town that could help them move forward with an ADU.
Okay, thank you, Shereen. Anyone else from the board? Okay, public, I have two. First is Barbara Siegel. Barbara, welcome.
Thank you. I may want to pose a question when you discuss the 4C vote to affirm or reject administrative order number five.
Barbara, that'll, I'll tell you when that's going to happen. That won't be for public comments. This is after the COVID update, okay?
I was never sure when you're supposed to say you want to speak.
Yeah, this one says public announcement. That's fine. It's okay.
Wait until then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Elaine, welcome, Elaine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After the select board's meeting on February 1 with the post-storm update, the town manager had indicated that the emergency operations team was going to meet to review what went well and what could have been improved upon, and take the comments that were sent to you in writing and the comments made publicly, as well as your comments, and report back. I thought we would have had an update tonight. It's not listed in any of the agenda packets for any meeting through March 29. So it's been two weeks since we've heard anything, kind of as if the storm never happened. So unless the plan is to announce that communications are going to be sent out to the public before we lose power, and that there is a plan to keep the community center open, I would ask for an agenda item next week. People are still talking about the storms with each other and what their particular situations were. Some have been posted on Facebook and other social media. And I think that whether or not people think it's over and it was behind us, we're still in the middle of winter. A lot of people had life-threatening situations, and I think we need to have an update because we are still in the middle of the winter, and people need to know what the plan is, or if there isn't a plan, so that we know how to plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Okay, anyone else? I don't see any hands up. Okay, let's move over to our new business coronavirus update. Dr. Bob. I see you there. Okay, welcome.
Good evening, members of the board and members of the public. So for tonight's coronavirus update, let me start by sharing my screen. So you should be seeing Chatham's monthly accounting of confirmed COVID-19 cases since the beginning of the pandemic. As of yesterday afternoon, we are at 733 cases in total since March of 2020, when we had our first reported case. We have had 15 cases so far in this month of February 2022, which is down significantly from what we saw in January, and is also down from what we saw last year, when we had a total of 42 cases for the entire month of February 2021. Given that we are currently halfway through the month of February, and we're at 15 cases, I think it's safe to assume that we will end this month with about a third less cases reported than we had last year, which is a good sign and a sign of the continuing drop-off in the Omicron surge. Just to put it in a little bit closer detail, if you will, you are now seeing the weekly confirmed COVID-19 cases in Chatham since the beginning of December of last year, indicating the after Thanksgiving and then after Christmas, Hanukkah, and New Year spikes that we had, where we were averaging close to 50 cases a week. In the last weekly full period, which is February 5 through the 11, we only had four cases. So as you can see, ever since roughly that third week in January, the cases have been dropping off fairly rapidly and fairly steadily to the point that we're at now. And that's why I'm cautiously optimistic that we are on track to have a much better February this year than we experienced last year, or even in January, when we were dealing with the height of the Omicron surge. In terms of where we are with percent positivity, and keep in mind, this is data as of last Thursday, so as of the 10th of February, for the preceding two weeks, because the state only reports this data on a weekly basis. And you can see again that we have, over the last couple of weeks, we have seen a substantial drop in our 14-day percent positivity compared to the peak that we experienced about mid-January. And this is consistent with what we're seeing on Cape Cod, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and across the nation, that most localities are past the peak of the Omicron surge. And this has been borne out. I watched the data coming out of the MWRA wastewater treatment facility in Boston, where they monitor the levels of the virus in wastewater. And that has seen a significant drop back to the point that levels are now where they were prior to the Omicron surge. So I'm hopeful that when we get this week's data on Thursday, that our 14-day percent positivity rate may be below the 5% threshold, which indicates whether or not a disease is widespread in the community, or basically out of control, if you will. When it's under 5%, that usually means it's being managed very well. And then finally, in terms of graphics, the average daily incident rate, we are seeing the same thing that we saw pretty much for the percent positivity. It has been dropping as well fairly consistently over the last couple of weeks, and we have every expectation that that will continue as well. And hopefully, we get back down to the levels that we were seeing last summer, and in the summer and fall of 2020 as well, when we were close to that zero mark, which would be great. That is what I have for graphics tonight. I just have a couple of other things to update the board and the public on. You're probably aware through the press release that was issued yesterday afternoon, that the Board of Health rescinded their order requiring masks to be worn for any public meetings by a board committee or commission, or gatherings of two or more individuals in town meeting facilities, as well as requiring masks in the gym and the fitness room at the community centers. So that was lifted by the Board of Health at their meeting yesterday, based on their review of the same, pretty much the same data that you just saw of the declining case numbers in Chatham specifically. So with that vote and the vote that they took last Monday, there are no longer any mask mandates in the community of Chatham. However, the Board of Health still strongly urges everyone to continue to abide by the state's advisory on wearing masks, and that advisory was just updated today. And that was also sent around to town staff, as well as members of the board. But just for the public, who may not have gotten wind of that information yet, or that update, if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to read two quick things from that advisory for the public. So this is the state's advisory regarding mask coverings, updated as of yesterday, but it was just released by the state today. Recognizing that Massachusetts is a national leader in vaccine acceptance, and in light of recent positive progress on COVID-19 indicators, the Department of Public Health now advises that a fully vaccinated person should wear a mask or face covering when indoors, and not in your own home, if you have a weakened immune system, or if you are at increased risk for severe disease because of your age or an underlying medical condition, or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system, is at increased risk for severe disease, or is unvaccinated. The big change from their prior advisory issued back in December was that they were indicating that everyone should wear a mask when indoors because of the Omicron variant surge. They have now updated that to only indicate that masks are required if you're fully vaccinated for those people that have some underlying condition, or a relative or family member, or somebody else in your household that has a similar case. They do go on to say, for individuals who are not fully vaccinated, it's important that you continue to wear a face covering or mask to help prevent you from spreading COVID-19 to other people. And that's consistent with the guidance all along, that if someone is not vaccinated, they should continue to wear a mask in all indoor situations. And then the final thing that I just wanted to highlight for folks, and the board is aware of this, tomorrow, Wednesday, February 16, between the hours of 2:00 and 4:30 p.m. at the annex, we will be holding a drive-through distribution of at-home COVID-19 test kits for all Chatham residents. So it will be drive-through only, so you won't have to get out of your car, just like we've done for vaccinations and testing. You will simply drive into the annex, lower parking lot, and we will have a police detail officer, as well as members of our CERT team directing traffic. You will need to provide proof of Chatham residency in the form of a driver's license showing a Chatham address, a real estate tax bill, or a long-term lease, meaning greater than six months, for a Chatham property. And we will provide one test kit for each member of the household. And each test kit, these are very similar to the ones you can buy in local markets, CVS, Walgreens. They're similar to the ones that you can get free from the federal government, as well through the postal service. Obviously, a different manufacturer, but same kind of idea. There's two individual tests inside each kit, and folks should not just, you know, use these whenever. They should be reserved for when you experience symptoms, or you have close contact with someone, and then you will have the ability to test yourself. And if you test positive, obviously, you would need to quarantine in accordance with the CDC guidance of five days of isolation, and then followed by five days of mask-wearing. So again, that distribution will take place tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:30, or until supplies last. We do have about 1,700 kits available, so you do not need to rush and be there right at 2:00. I don't think they will all go that fast. But again, from 2:00 to 4:30 tomorrow, Wednesday, February 16, at the town annex. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? I see none. About from the public? Now go over to back to Jill. I don't see any hands up. Jill, any comments?
Peter, I have a question for Dr. Bob, unless Jill speaks.
No, go right ahead. Thanks.
Okay. Dr. Bob, does it say somebody drove through and they had proof of ID for themselves? Could they have proof of ID from their spouse, or their, or children? Is that possible, without them being present in the car?
Yeah, they do not need to be present. We're assuming that everybody's going to be honest, and if they tell us that they have three members in their family, we will provide three kits. They do not need to have IDs for the other members who may not be there. We're going on people's honesty.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Any other questions? Saying none? Thank you, Dr. Bob. Okay, we'll see you later, I'm sure. Let's move ahead. I'll give, oh, I'm sorry, Jill, go ahead.
Thank you. So another part of the COVID relief measure by the governor is the relaxation and extension of the open meeting law, virtual and remote meeting participation. So what the governor has extended that he had originally put into place on March 12 is to allow for virtual meetings, and that is in place until July 15, 2022, so that there doesn't need to be an in-person quorum requirement. It can be done virtually. And so with that, I wanted to check in with the board. Our next meeting is on the 22nd, and if you would want to continue on this virtual platform, or hybrid platform, and would you like to return to in-person meetings at the annex? So that's something that we do need your input on before next week.
Okay. We'll send out an email on that. We'll, we can decide. When are you leaving, Cory? I mean, I want to get it out before you leave.
I leave Saturday.
Okay, great. That's fine. Dean, thank you.
Peter, I wonder if we might not have an expression of our preferences at this time, so that Jill can...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
At least as to next week. I personally think we should continue the virtual until at least March 1. And then when Cory's back.
Yeah, and we can reevaluate it at that time, considering that most likely, we'd have to be wearing masks anyway, inside, well, maybe not everyone, but a number, at least some of us on the board might have to. And then also the people that are in the audience. So I don't know, anyone else have a thought? Shereen, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I agree with Dean. I think that's a good way to go, is to shoot for a target of March 1.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, agreed.
And Cory? This makes it easy.
No, that's, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Let's see, next up is our public comments on our following, on the business agenda. And Barbara Siegel, this is, I'll let you go first, since you were up there before. And then anyone else, just raise your hand.
Well, as stated in my email to you, I think it's a perfect time for this reorganization for community support, and for the new director of the Council of Aging to be part of that, and Recreation and Public Works. So I'm hoping that the discussion tonight will affirm that decision, so hiring of the staff can take, announcements can be sent out very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. I see Gloria's hands up. Welcome, Gloria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, it's Gloria Freeman. I'm speaking on Business Agenda Item 4, Referral of the RPZ Zoning Bylaw Amendment to the Planning Board. It was Town Council Castello who explained to the Planning Board that a Runway Protection Zone overlay District zoning bylaw amendment that a runway protection zone overlay district zoning bylaw amendment was required and needed for Chatham to be in compliance with FAA regulations, and that without it, the town could be held legally responsible if any accidents should occur. Town Council pointed out that development and redevelopment in the RPZs has been ignored in the past. But now that it has been recognized and openly discussed, it can no longer be ignored. When Planning Board members refused to craft such a bylaw amendment in response to Town Council's opinion, the chairperson suggested that the Airport Commission bring the amendment to town meeting, and that is what is before you. Excuse me. No one seems to know why past directors of community development, town managers, selectmen, the Cape Cod Commission, and Airport Commission members have looked the other way up to now in regard to building in the RPZ. But the current Airport Commission has stepped forward because, as their chairman said, they have an obligation to do so. That obligation, based on safety, is defined in the last paragraph of the amendment's explanation. I hope in consideration of your own responsibilities and the lives, safety, health, property values, quality of lives, and the environment, you will move this amendment forward, place it in the warrant, and give it your blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Elaine, your hands up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I wanted to speak on that same issue. I'm not sure who is here tonight to present it to you, whether it's the Airport Commission and if Town Council is going to be here. When we take state and federal funds under the grant assurance program and we sign and accept them, we have a contractual arrangement with the FAA that we will follow their guidelines, their criteria, and their directives. And this is one of them. And it's very important because the runway protection zones are the, the reason why they are spoken about so specifically is that most crashes happen on takeoff and landing. So it is dangerous to the people on the ground. So I hope you will refer to the Planning Board with full support. Again, I don't know why either. It has been ignored for so many years. I think this should be presented at town meeting as, as one of those housekeeping amendments. It has to be done because it has been ignored, and we have to protect people on the ground. And I think number four prohibited uses in this amendment clearly states what the FAA's position is on this and the reasons why. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Elaine. Next up is Rick Levitt.
Thank you, Peter. I fully support referring the bylaw, the Airport Commission's bylaw to, to the Planning Board. And I will plan to speak on that issue that night. And I also understand the Finance Committee will be reviewing the bylaw also. I, the only comment that needs to be made tonight is we should be very wary of some previous speakers voicing their support for this deeply flawed zoning bylaw. They were called out recently in a Chronicle editorial as playing politics. Their interest is not safety. Their interest is to stop West Chatham revitalization, including the senior center.
Mr. Chairman, I take objection to what he just said.
I, I, thank you, Elaine. Elaine, please. Elaine, please. Yeah, I, I let him finish his words. And our vote tonight is to transfer not the substance of the, of the, of the comments. And Rick, you said you support moving it over. I, I think it's appropriate that you kind of leave it at that.
Yeah, I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Nicole Stern is up next.
I think I just unmuted myself.
You did.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, there's a lot of discussion about the runway protection zone. And I've heard a lot on, on different boards that they never knew about the runway protection zone as far as the West Chatham development was concerned. I've heard other things from the public that what's the problem? Because there already are some residents and businesses in the runway protection zone. But perhaps what they don't realize or haven't looked into is this is not the same runway protection zone as what we have right now. Now we're talking about housing people in a runway protection zone that's going to be flying in inclement weather, rain, sleet, and storm. And that was not the way the previous runway was used for the airport. So that's a very important factor there.
Nicole, this is, this is not a substance of what I referred to. That'd be appropriate for your comments at the Planning Board. In general.
Okay, but I think it's okay that everybody realizes that because a lot of people on different boards, including your board, are not comparing, they're comparing apples to apples. And this is very different. This is a very different, the airport's going in a very different direction. And a lot more people will be at risk unless the intent is, if there is development there, that every tenant or owner has to sign a disclosure stating that they are in a runway protection zone, which is also called a danger zone and a crash zone.
Thank you.
I'm finished. Thank you.
Yeah, let me go to Dean. Go ahead, Dean. Mike, you're on mute.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask if you would allow it, a question of Ms. Stern. Is she supporting or opposing the referral to the Planning Board? I'm just trying to understand what her position is, because that would be helpful in our deliberation later on.
I'm supporting that it be referred to town meeting. That's your decision, I believe.
Okay, we have to refer. No, go ahead, Dean.
We have to refer. Well, you can say it better than I. But I think we have to refer it to the Planning Board. Then they would refer it to town meeting.
That's correct.
I was, I was, I listened to the Planning Board meeting yesterday, and again, no disrespect to any board. I'm not up on everything, but to me, it sounded like there was a lot of juggling going on, back and forth, back and forth, between the Select Board and the Planning Board. So let me just leave it at that. I hope I've answered your question. Thank you.
I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's see, I have Mike Galen on. And I have, Rick, your hand still up?
Still up?
Okay, okay. Thanks. Yeah, back. I did have Mike. You still there, Mike?
I am. I am. I am here to also urge referral of these, the bylaw to the Planning Board.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, do we have any others? Ye none? All right. First up, now we'll get into our, the first part of our budget discussions. Let me, we have board departments we're looking at tonight, starting with Public Works. Then we'll move into Natural Resources, Public, then Public Safety, and then Debt Services. That'll be, we'll start with Alex. I see Alex is on there. And the only votes we have tonight are really on capital projects that are associated with it. So welcome, Alex. And all the department heads, I imagine, are here. I think I see them all on. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the department heads are here to answer any questions you may have on items within their budget. What I will do is I'll present a brief overview of the issue, you know, the agenda packets, the agenda reports that were in your packet tonight, and just go through some of the highlights and the budget changes for the different departments. So I'm going to have, I have a brief presentation to run through this, sort of to help me along the way.
Okay, Alex, I think what we'll do, unless I get anything different from the board, is we'll take, as we go through each department, when we get to the end of that department, we'll do the vote if it's required.
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, so can you see my screen now? Yes, okay. All right. So this is the FY 2023 budget presentation. And tonight, quite a heavy lift of the different departments we're going through. So we have the Department of Public Works, which is in Section 5 of your budget book, Natural Resources, Public Safety, Other Services, which are items such as insurance and the Reserve Fund, and then Debt Services, the chair mentioned in Section 9 at the end. And we will be discussing some of the capital items under each of the different departments. So beginning with Department of Public Works, Section 5, that covers the divisions of Highway, Transfer Stations, Sewers, Cemetery, Grounds, Principal Projects Administration, Recreation, Beaches, and then the smaller divisions of Snow and Ice, Street Lighting, Fuel Depot, and Lighthouse Beach. Some of the changes in here is that we're looking at the Principal Projects and Administrations. So a total of six full-time equivalents, adding one additional full-time equivalent FTE to be shared with the cemetery. And again, that is a current position that's vacant right now that we're transferring from the Recreation and Beaches Division to the Principal Projects and Administration Division, all under DPW. Highway, and again, these are the total amounts that we're looking at for the budgets. And I've just put that here. If there's any questions on the items, we can run through those. But I'm just sort of showing some of the changes within the division, within the department. Snow and Ice, we're actually requesting an increase of $4,000 for next year, up to $95,000 from '91. And again, as we increase the rates for our snowplow drivers, we felt that that was a prudent thing to do. Cemetery, a large change there as we have now increased the hours for the cemetery administrator. And as I just mentioned, the shared assistant will be split between Principal Projects and Operations and the cemetery to provide support there. And I see Cory's hand is up.
Thank you, Alex. A general question, I'm assuming this could be the appropriate time to throw this in. So I'm going to take a stab at it. We were talking about our operating budget. It over, overlaps with, you know, DPW and Highway and everything. I want to get a better understanding of what we have for town assets as far as our, our staff members that hold CDL licenses. Have we maintained? I guess, I guess, what is the, the status of our staff with CDL licenses? Have we lost any? Do we, do we offer any incentives to, to maintain a CDL license? Because, I mean, with our day-to-day operations, and obviously with the storms that, you know, obviously strain those resources, what is the status of that? And is there anything that we need to consider moving forward to better position the town to have the right amount of staff, holding these licenses, maintaining these licenses, so we can get the operations done in the manner we, you know, we, we expect to do? So that's my question.
I'm not sure how many employees have their CDL licenses. I know they are required for the heavy equipment operators at the transfer station and the highway department. I don't know if Tom Temple has that exact number of employees who do hold the licenses. Tom?
Yeah, currently, right now, we, we're down one CDL driver who left the Highway Division and took a, one of the job openings over at the transfer station. The transfer station is totally filled at the current time. We're, we're only missing one CDL driver from Highway, which we're, we're currently advertising to try to fill that. Marcus had gone from the Highway to the transfer station. And then our laborer, one of our laborers from Parks went as the swing laborer between Highway and Transfer. So currently, we're trying to, we, we're currently backfilling and trying to get those filled. But we do maintain our records as far as CDL. We, we, we give incentives even when we had laborers in the past, when we were shorthanded during COVID. We encourage them to take the CDL licenses and pursue those, which they did. And we had actually additional drivers that were moved up to that pay grade to, to benefit them and as well as the town as far as having a CDL driver at our availability during the peak time for all that transportation we were doing back and forth. So currently, we're just down one, one CDL driver at this point in time.
It's a follow-up. So my understanding is to maintain a CDL license is becoming quite cost prohibitive to some individuals. And it's, you know, it's raised, you know, the cost of it is raised like everything else in the world these days. Are, are, are incentives adequate? Or do we need to look at any adjustments in our incentives to maintain those CDL licenses in the various departments?
I think, I think the town of Chatham has a real good program as far as, you know, paying for the licenses as part of their, you know, them keeping their job. They go and when they have to get recertified and also the DOT cards that they need to fill out, the town pays for that to keep it updated. When it comes time for advancing their career, if they're a laborer, we encourage them to take the, the test. And if they get the, they pass the CDL license, the, the town pays for that to make sure that they're staying within our organization. So I, I see that as a plus for, for the town and the community, as well as the, the employee who's bettering their position to move up within the organization.
All right. Thank you. That's it for the moment.
Okay, thank you. I see Dean's hands up. Alex?
Thank you, Peter. Alex, can you elaborate a little bit about the cemetery admin position? Will the cemetery department be staffed 100% during the day? Or is this a part-time staffing? Does it mesh with another shared position? And thus far, we've had a position that was part-time only, and I think we've had difficulty filling it since the previous incumbent left.
Yeah, that is correct. And actually, the current position, we're increasing the hours from 15 hours per week to 19 hours per week. So that will provide some support there as well. The proposed position is a shared position between the Principal Projects and Operations and Administration, and will provide support to the cemetery. So, and that is a full-time position within the DPW Division, and is housed at the DPW building.
So the total number of hours that will be devoted to the cemetery, if you combine this position with the 19-hour position, will be what? Or is it flexible?
Yeah, I think it's flexible. And I see Jill has her hand up, so I'll let her answer that question.
Go ahead, Jill.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the incumbent, Dee, has returned to work for the town. So it's a 19-hour a week position. She's been working more to get the office and records up to date and organized. The behind-the-scenes work would be the, the Projects and Operations Assistant, working with our IT Director to have a, a web-based program for people to do research and to access plot locations that they desire. So some, there was two aspects to the cemetery division. One was a front, forward-facing person to help people purchase the logs and to make sure when there are burials, they are in the right place. But we contract out for the actual burial diggers. And then the behind-the-scenes was some of our record-keeping and, and you'll see this with other towns, too, where you can go online and, and you can see a family plot with information that's there. So some people want that historical knowledge and have it at their fingertips with, you know, some data protected for that. So I think it's going to get the cemetery administration up to par. Again, Dee has some flexibility to put in as much time as she needs to until June 30th. And then after, we think we would have it covered. If not, we'll certainly revisit it. But I think we're in pretty good shape.
So is this, is this cemetery, this, this shared position, though, is, i, 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 that's going to take effect July 1, presumably, right? A shared position?
There is funding in that position in the current fiscal year due to, due to another vacancy. So right now, we have the, the position description being reviewed by the appropriate union for comments and then, and the classification. And then we could fill that position before June 30th. But it does have a slight fiscal impact to FY 23 for what you're reviewing today.
How many hours per week would you anticipate this shared position to be devoted to the cemetery work?
I think at first, it, I could say it depends. Right now, there was some earmark of duties to help the airport staff liaison for putting the packets together and doing some research, as well as getting some of the town project, facility projects off and running. I, I think we just have to meet with, with Dee and whoever the candidate ends up to be and where we, the, where we are. The cemetery online program has been in process. So I'm hoping to get it effectuated before June 30th. And then it just, it's a matter of what other special projects are needed by the cemetery commission or the administrator. Again, it's more behind-the-scenes work.
So, well, let me turn to that online project. So is the ultimate goal in that regard to have availability on the town website for somebody to, anybody in the public to go and check to see who might be buried in a particular location?
That is the goal. We're just working through what data, as, you know, part of, you know, cybersecurity and so forth, that we can put onto the site. But certainly for managing all of the cemeteries, we'll have a database for the cemetery administrator to use that will know exactly who is in what plot and in what cemetery. So it will provide some needed backup. And then we're planning to do a digitization of the records, too. Right now, there's some of the historical documents that are in, in books that we, we do need to digitize just for our own record. So I know there's nothing concrete that I'm saying right now, because we're really focused on getting the cemetery office up and running. And, but this online project, and I don't have a lot of details, because it's, it's in the works. And we'll certainly do a demonstration once we get closer to the end. But I think it will provide that administrative, high-level administrative assistance that's needed for the cemetery commission and to help Terry in particular with facilities, project administration, and helping with the airport commission projects that relate to the town.
So the online project, do you anticipate that that's going to extend into the next fiscal year? This next fiscal year coming, before it's completed?
I don't know yet. It's been in works. It, it was stalled a bit with COVID, but the funding had already been appropriated. And so it is in the works. And I don't know, Alex, if you have more information on that. But we can certainly come back to the board with the progress on it.
I think it's, it sounds like a good thing to do, and I'm happy to hear it's being done. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff's hands up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it will likely continue into next year, Dean. There's a lot, there's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of chronicling, a lot of history to be recorded. The digitization effort, you know, will be ongoing. But they, the goal, the vision of the commissioners is to have that online, so that folks can go in and see what's available, who's where, et cetera. So, you know, it, it, there's, there's a vision there, believe me. COVID kind of put a crimp into their efforts, and of course, the chair is, has, has not been well, and now Dave's the new chair. So there's, there's still a lot of work to do. The fact that Dee came back i- is really good news. She's experienced in that position, and she understands what is needed. She's the front face of the, of the cemetery commission when folks come in or call. So it's really important that, it's really great that she returned. The other point I want to, I want to make, and I think this is of critical importance as well, is that we're bringing the maintenance in-house. So we're not, we're, we're gonna, we're not gonna have the contract outside services for the maintenance of the cemetery. So we're gonna be closer to the action. We've got a couple of folks coming into the DPW department, gonna share with facilities as well. So that's coming back in. I think there's some minor capital, capital, pieces of capital equipment as well, that, that are in the budget as well, that's gonna support that, that return. But I think the commissioners and Tom, et cetera, think they're gonna have a much better control on the maintenance and with, with folks reporting directly into the department. So, and I think, I think it's a good move, and I'd certainly support it. We've got some renewed energy there, you know. Dave's doing a good job. Bill Bystrum's on the committee now, commission now, I should say, and Stephen Hart as well. So there, there's some renewed energy. There's some, some very much renewed attentions. They've been working with Jill and Alex, I know. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jeff. I should mention for everyone who's on, on TV or online, Jeff is our liaison to the cemetery commission. So, back to you, Alex. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, as select member Dyken has just mentioned, we are bringing the cemetery, maintenance of the cemetery in-house. And you can see that is reflected in the grounds budget with the addition of three late work done. And then we have Recreation and Beaches and Lighthouse Beach. I'm just going to run through these divisions rather quickly unless there's a question. So some of the changes of notes, and we've talked about some of these, is the transfer of two of three custodial positions, two grounds from the Principal Projects and Operations, the one remaining custodial position to become a facilities technician under that division, and then the new assistant, a shared position within the DPW, as we just discussed, shared with cemeteries. Because we're not having custodial, custodians in-house, we will have, have to increase the office and bathroom cleaning line item to outsource the custodial services. So that's 180,000 additional money requested for next year. Purchase of services line item for HVAC, building controls, all those service agreements that we have, and then building grounds maintenance, and the increase of 57,100. I just highlighted those, as those were some of the larger increases within the division's budget. Again, as we talked about the cemetery, the secretarial position, we've increased, our administrator, we've increased the hours. We have that new shared assistant position to provide support. And then there's a decrease in the grounds maintenance, as we brought that in-house under the grounds division, as just explained. Also, in the grounds, we've transferred the expenses for the tree warden. This is not a salary. It's the expenses associated with some of those items that need to be cleared up have moved from the Recreation Division into the grounds division. Some of the increases, again, in the sewer division for contracted services, chemicals. Oh, I see Dean's hand is up. I'll stop here.
Thank you, Alex. Just a quick question. Maybe this goes to Jill. With the retirement of Dan Tobin, who is now going to be the tree warden?
Gary Glaser, our DPW superintendent, will assume those duties.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you. Okay, so again, sewer division, contracted services, and some of the chemicals increasing, and they need, additional need for additional chemicals. The transfer station, we have the hauling and tipping contracts, hauling to CMAAS and the tipping fees. Recreation and beaches, the price for portable toilets. We go out to bid as part of the county bid every year, so we're expecting an increase with that. You'll note across the, across the town, increased costs for utilities, especially electric and gas, not knowing what's going to happen, as those can be volatile. And then seasonal wages. We've reviewed all the seasonal wages, again, across the town. So we remain competitive with other towns and can hire seasonal employees to accomplish all the tasks that are necessary. So I'll pause here, because I was going to move into natural resources. But if there's any questions on DPW, we can address those now, either from items that were in the agenda report or from what you've heard tonight.
Anyone on the board? I don't, Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Alex, I have a question on, for the, in the transfer station, on revenues. It just, fiscal year-to-date through 12/31, the 626K, but we're budgeting 975. So I just wondered whether we're budgeting too low on the mono-revenues. I didn't know where the change was. You take 626 and annualize it, it's like 1.1.2 million, 1252. So maybe there's a reason why, but it just looked, looked low to me, that's all. Well, we're projecting for revenues for the transfer station. Thanks.
And we'll review those as we move forward through the budget. We don't budget our revenues. So as we get the amount in for the final amounts for FY 2022, prior to setting the tax rate, and I think we did increase those, I'm just looking at my detail right now. And it might not have got increased in this budget here. But for transfer station, yeah, we've increased that to a million dollars.
There you go.
Yep.
And it couldn't even get a little north of that. But anyway, thanks, Alex. You want to be too conservative on the revenue side now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good point. Okay, Alex.
Okay, so if there's no more questions on DPW, I'll just go over some of the items that are in the capital. I don't have those in this spreadsheet, but we do have, oh, and the water department.
Alex, Dean has his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
That's on screen.
Alex, you plan, or Mr. Chairman, were you planning to take up the water capital item for water mains that was in the DPW?
Yeah, you read, you're, you're reading my mind, because that's what, yeah, that's true. I was, yeah, well, I'd like, yeah, we were gonna do that right after we're done. And you were just going into capital. Do you have charts for that, or just do you need to just talk to it?
No, I don't have a chart for that here at this time. I had capital at the end. But I think it's probably the best idea to go through those right now, as what's needed for the DPW capital. And then as well as the water operating and water capital requests that are in the, under the DPW. Even though we vote the water operating budget separately, and water capital is always separate outside of the five-year capital or the capital budget. So the capital budget under Section 10 in the budget book includes $880,000 for the DPW divisions. Under Highway, we have 385,000 for the annual items, such as road maintenance, sidewalks, the bike trail, et cetera, catch basins. The sewer division is recommended at 255,000 for the capital budget. And there's a couple of items that we're recommending for funding through the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. As you are aware, ARPA can be used for water, wastewater, broadband, as well as some other items. But those are the three that Treasury has called out as acceptable for towns to request funding. And then facilities includes 200,000 for property management, building maintenance, as well as an annual request of $30,000 for public restroom repairs. And that is to, you know, update some of our restrooms and keep them looking nice and functioning well. And then under equipment, we have requests for, as we mentioned, maintenance of town cemeteries for mowing items and tools. And then the Highway Division is replacing the old six-wheeler trucks. So that's a large, single-ticket item of 248,000. And I see Jeff has his hand up, so I will pause.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. And actually, it's not about capital, per se. But I was just concerned about, how did we do filling the seasonal positions last year? And I'm looking at, you know, park and rec, I'm looking at beaches and stuff. And are we competitive enough to attract enough applicants? I guess is my question, is my question. Thanks.
As far as park and rec and beaches, we did attract enough applicants. So there are quite a few seasonal employees. We do get quite a few returning seasonal workers under the Recreation Division. I think we've had some challenges with some of the other seasonal workers, specifically at the transfer station. And that's, I'm happy to let department heads answer if they have any more insight on that.
Anyone out? Okay, I don't see any hands up. Let me ask a question here. You, you were, you, you have the, the capital charts at the end. And you were, I assume you were gonna have us vote at the end. You're planning to do that.
Well, in your packet, we have, specifically for the water department, we have the water capital. And I think probably be, if you'd like to vote, once we get through the water operating, and then I can discuss the water capital, because I did not include that at the capital. It's just the capital budget at the end, not the water capital.
Okay, got it. All right. We'll, we'll do that.
Okay, so the water operating budget, as you know, is presented as a separate article, as it's funded through water rates. So it's being presented at 3,857,200. That's an increase of just over 275,000 from the FY 2022 budget. And I listed the increases in your packet. So again, increases in testing, and that is testing for PFAS, lead and copper, as well as regular testing, electric. Bringing Indian Hill Well online is going to increase the budget in different areas. You can see that in the packet. Gas heat, again, increasing utility costs associated with the Indian Hill Well in particular. Contracted services, we have contractual obligation. Chemicals, again, due to bringing additional well online. And then the well cleaning, we've received a quote for that. The water department budget also includes debt service, and it's declining for FY 2023. By, not by very much, but it is declining, so that's good, and that's part of that entire budget. So, and as noted, the water budget is funded majority through water revenue. $400,000 is funded through the tax rate, and that's for fire hydrant or fire suppression. And the water revenues have been sufficient to fund the expenditures without needing an increase in water rates in the current future or at this time. So I'll pause there. If there's any questions on the water operating budget.
Any questions? Guess not, Alex.
Okay, thank you. We have one request for water capital this year, and that is really the annual request for water mains. As you know, with the sewer project, as we run sewers through towns, we try to replace the old water mains with new water mains to reduce the risk of water breaks. So this year, we're asking for $750,000 for the water main capital article. And that is a standalone article that we've asked you to respectfully vote to place on the warrant and to make a recommendation. And in your packet is draft article.
Thank you. Alex, Jeff?
Yeah, Alex, thank you. Is this, is this primarily on the older, the original section of town? We're replacing water mains downtown and in that area?
I see Tom Temple. Thank you.
You're welcome. We normally go ahead and work hand-in-hand with the sewer project. So if we have any, any mains that show history of leaks, we replace those mains in those areas. If we have the, the asbestos lines, we replace them with the, you know, with the Dr. Lyon main. So we try to do it in conjunction, so we're, we're not spending double the amount of money on fixing roadways when we can repair those that are under construction for sewer. We take care of them at the same time. So we're, we're trying to be more efficient in making sure that we get the most bang for our, our money.
Jeff?
Hey, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? You have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
The first one is to vote to place the water capital, water main article on the 2022 annual town meeting warrant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to place this water mains, water capital item as presented on the warrant for May, for our annual town meeting currently scheduled in May, 2022.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Let me go across. Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And we have a second vote to, to vote to recommend it, it go to, oh, you included that, didn't you?
No, 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 I didn't.
Okay, go ahead.
So I move to recommend this article to town meeting.
Okay.
Aye.
I have a second. Let's go with Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay, Alex.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to natural resources. Sorry, on to natural resources. Natural resources is made up of these different divisions, and this is in Section Four of the budget book. Health and Environment, Conservation, Pleasant Bay Management, the Harbor Master Division, Coastal Resources, Shellfish. And then there are three committees, South Coastal Harbor Plan Committee, Shellfish Advisory Committee, and Waterways Advisory Committee. So again, some of the increases, the Health Division is looking for, to increase the, I think I said health agent, but health inspector. I think I said health agent, but health inspector from a part-time to a full-time. So that is a plus 0.5 FTE, and the amount is total amount for Health Division is $511,474. Conservation is also increasing with the addition of one full-time equivalent. The Assistant Conservation Agent Wetlands Permitting Coordinator. And 50% of that will be funded through the Wetlands Protection Fund. So moving on, Pleasant Bay Alliance, this is Chatham's share of one of four towns that funds Pleasant Bay Alliance. Chatham's share is 35% of their budget, coming in at $49,061. The Harbor Master Budget, $754,295. And then the other divisions, Coastal Resources, $130,668. Shellfish, $215,314. And then each of the committees at $1,000 apiece. In your agenda report was a very detailed description of the two requests. So for the Assistant Conservation Agent, Wetlands Permitting Coordinator, as well as increasing the Health Inspector from a part-time to full-time. I don't know if there's any questions on those. I'm happy to, I see Dean's hand is up.
Yeah, Dean's hand is up. Go ahead, Dean. Hi, you're on mute.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to compliment Dr. Dunkinson and his staff for the very detailed and thorough narrative explaining, you know, the, the budget and the needs that he's identified. I thought it was really helpful. It's a bit more expansive than we usually see in, in these reports. So I appreciate that. That's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. And I have ditto. That was my comment, especially when you put those two together and the discussion that went in and what's required for each of those positions. I, I thought that, that's good. That's not good reading for everyone, but I think it's, it's, it's information that, that public should read, too. There's, there's a lot going on. Let me go over to Cory.
No, I was just gonna say I'm very supportive of having a full-time, you know, another full-time health agent. I mean, there's a lot of tasks that, you know, these individuals perform for the community. And, you know, once we added COVID into the mix, I mean, they're running around in every direction possible trying to keep up with the workload. So there's definitely a need for it. We have obviously, you know, restaurants and food service industries and, and other facilities and every, every ounce of duty that, that you can point out for a board health agent. And the workload is most certainly there. So this one really, I think would be the benefit to both the town's operation and the benefit of the community for, for being able to, you know, maintain the needs that are, that are, that are out there. So this one's a no-brainer to me because I see it from a food industry perspective that, you know, the, the, you know, the workload they're putting into it, and I can definitely support this one moving forward.
Thank you, Cory. Jeff?
Yeah, I echo the sentiments of Selectman Castro and Metters and Kokolos. I, I did enjoy, I thought the, the explanation was excellent for the health agent position and the conservation agent position. And I'm supportive of both. You clearly articulated the, the reasons for the request and the duties that are gonna, you know, follow these folks. So I, I really did appreciate the narrative as well, and I thank you, and I'm gonna support it. Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. And Shereen?
Thanks. Just a couple quick, a comment, a couple quick questions, a comment, too. I just, I see that the Animal Control Office, this is a little bitty money, but gets a stipend from this department in addition to her salary from, I think it's through the Police and Fire, or Police Department. Is it, can you tell me why that, is it in coordination with the Board of Health, or why is that?
Yeah, Alex, if you want, I can take that one. Under, yes, under state law, the Board of Health is responsible for stable inspections. So this stipend is to cover stable inspections and, and other inspections, you know, chicken coops and things like that. But primarily the stable inspections that falls under the Board of Health responsibility.
Thank you. And on the Assistant Conservation, present position of the Assistant Conservation Agent, you, you're stating that it's solely, that, that agent has become solely involved in the land and beach management and due to the, you know, the habitat of North Beach and the HCP plan, and, and then the rest of the year is spent doing conservation land management. I'm assuming Chatham Side versus North Beach. How many acres are we managing at this point? Conservation acres are we managing? Just as a matter of information, wasn't anything?
I think we, I don't have the exact number at my fingertips, but I believe we have over 1,000 acres of conservation lands management or conservation lands to manage. So, yeah, quite a bit.
And that includes marshland, ponds?
That's primarily upland area and all. Yeah, but, you know, they surround ponds and wetlands and everything else. So, yeah, I'll get that exact number for you.
That's okay. It was just a general information for the public. Um, yes, okay, thank you. I'm fully supportive of the increased staff.
Thank you, Shereen. Cory, your hand still up or you're okay? Yeah, got it. Okay, Alex.
Okay, thank you. And then moving through the divisions, we have, just want to point out, let's see. So again, the changes of notes, the Assistant Conservation Agent Wetlands Permit, increasing the Health Inspector from part-time to full-time. And then under the Harbor Master Division, there is a request for $45,000, which would be for the seasonal dock installation and removal. And the reason for that is that would free up staff to attend to regular duties rather than always having to spend time to put the floats in and remove the floats. And this would be getting coordinated all to have it at one time, as I understand it. And I see Jeff's hand is up, and Dr. Dunkinson is also here to answer any other questions.
Yeah, I had a question about that $45,000, Alex, to be honest with you. It was in the budget last year, and I think we didn't fund it. I'm not positive. But i- is it, is it, are those tasks that are done by the Harbor Masters Department? They put the floats in and out? And is the intent to subcontract that, that work now?
Yeah, that, that is the intent is to subcontract. It was submitted as a capital request last year. But because it is an operational cost, we really need to put it in the operational budget, not as capital. And I think that the explanation of why it is better to have it subcontracted out is that it frees up the Harbor Master staff for other pressing items, because this usually happens at the beginning of the season when they're trying to get other items or tasks accomplished. But I'll let Dr. Dunkinson answer that.
Hey, Dr. Bob.
Yeah, the proposed, the proposal is that we would subcontract out the installation and removal of the floats because, as Alex alluded, it, it happens at the beginning of the season and the end of the season when they're trying to do, you know, get boats ready, get buoys ready, get buoys deployed. And then the same thing in the fall, you know, they're trying to get boats out of the water and winterize. They're trying to get buoys out of the water and, and whatnot. So it's been very difficult with the staffing we've had to get all that accomplished in a timely fashion. You know, sometimes the Harbor Master plans on, you know, next Monday, Tuesday, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna deploy floats at, at the Fish Pier or at Old Mill BoYard or Barn Hill or wherever. And then, you know, a storm comes up, or a rescue comes up, or something comes up that diverts them, you know, from that task. And then it just, you know, it just, like everything else, the busy seasons, it just kind of snowballs. So by contracting that service out, you know, we could tell a contractor, look, we want all the floats installed within this two-week period, you know, get it done. And they wouldn't be distracted by something else going on. And the same thing in the fall, you know, we need them all out and placed in the parking lots. You know, right now, the Harbor Master staff has to coordinate with DPW for some of their heavy equipment to lift some of the floats in and out of the water, where if it's all done by a contractor, they would provide whatever services, you know, and equipment were needed to accomplish the task. So that's, that's the thinking behind it.
So it's to put the, put the floats in and take them out?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. We have, we're gonna talk about capital a second, too, right, Alex?
Right. Okay, Alex.
Okay, thank you. So capital for the, oh, the other divisions under there are basically level funded except for contractual increases for salaries and wages. And then, as I mentioned, Pleasant Bay Alliance, that is the town's portion of the, of their budget at 35%.
What slide do you, Alex, what slide do you have? I'm still showing the operating budget with Coastal Resources, Shellfish. Haven't seen any advanced slides.
Changes of note? Can you see that now?
No.
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 All right, let's see.
There you go.
Okay. Okay, so then moving on to the capital items for the Natural Resources Department. Capital Budget is $343,000 for natural resource projects and $99,000 for equipment being recommended. And so the requests include $50,000 for the annual drainage stormwater management. That's the MS4. So it's not the drainage with, associated with the DPW. $35,000 for a water quality statistical analysis. And $10,000 for conservation land management. This is for the equipment that's necessary to accomplish that task. And then Coastal Resources Capital Request includes $400,000 for dredging. We have $100,000 in the capital budget and $300,000 proposed as a separate warrant article, as we have done in the past. And then there's an annual request for $10,000 for town landing infrastructure and $50,000 for a comprehensive survey of town landings. And I see Jeff's hand is up, so I'll pause here.
Okay.
Yeah, just a $50,000 comprehensive survey. That's, I assume that's a, you know, a formal survey of every landing with the meets and bounds and all that stuff for, for $50,000. Then, and the other one is the Mitchell River Bridge improvements for $43,000. What, 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 what do we still need to do to Mitchell River Bridge? To, to, because it's wooden and it swells, or we spent so much money on that bridge.
Yeah, Alex, I'm happy to answer those questions.
Okay.
The town landing comprehensive survey, we're estimating that that entire project would be around $150,000. So, but we've, we've spread it out over three years, so it's not a huge lift in any one year. And basically, that is exactly as you said, we would have comprehensive surveys performed of all our town landings because some of them have never been surveyed. In some cases, we've had issues with encroachment upon, you know, town landings by a butters. So by having that comprehensive survey done and meets and bounds, or bounds in, you know, put in place, we'd be in a much better position than to manage our town landings because we and the public would know exactly where they are. And that's something we don't currently have for the majority of our town landings. And then in terms of the Mitchell River Bridge, that is basically yearly maintenance activities. You know, it is a wooden bridge. It's a, you know, it's got a lot of mechanics. It's got a lot of electrical. And so, you know, we've had a budget the last couple of years to provide these specialized services that are required to maintain that bridge in an operable condition, which we're required to do by the Coast Guard because it does, you know, cross a navigable waterway. So there's some items that we can do in-house, like Harbor Master staff is, has the last couple of years. They've treated the wooden superstructure, if you will, with wood preservative. But there's other mechanical items that are, you know, frankly, beyond their expertise. And there's about, you know, three manuals, about 10 inches thick with the O and M criteria, you know, when this has to be changed, when that has to be changed, things like that. So there's some of that that we basically contract out to specialized electricians, mechanics, whatever, to take care of that bridge and keep it in an operable condition.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you.
Alex, you're on Chart 14. That's where you want to be?
Yeah, I, I didn't have, as I said, all the capital was at the very end of the presentation, so which will just be a synopsis of it all.
Okay.
So again, we have a couple of standalone articles that we're requesting that you consider to, specifically the dredging article we're looking at. There were some articles that we've taken out of the capital budget. As I said, dredging for $300,000, acquisition of a surf boat, which we will right, somebody's looking at this. Acquisition of a surf boat, this would be a matching funds, so that's $250,000. And we will have that for discussion at a future Select Board meeting. And then also matching funds for the Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Projects. And that's $850,000 for a variety of projects that would go out to FY 2025. And again, those were the, the local share in order to receive grant funds for some of these. But tonight, and again, that will be discussed at a, at a later date. Tonight, we'd like to ask the board to place and recommend the $300,000 dredging article.
Thank you, Alex. I see Cory and then Shereen. Cory?
Now, I'll just make a brief comment because Alex did mention the, the surf boat will be brought up at a later discussion. But that one does, you know, scream bigger conversation. You know, it's something that we're kind of being forced into with our relationship with the Coast Guard. There's going to be questions about if we do, you know, bring in that as an asset to the town. Where are we gonna maintain it? How are we gonna staff it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So I'll hold my questions for when we, we bring it up in the future. But it's definitely conversations is gonna bring up a lot of questions, so.
Yeah, I agree. Shereen?
Thank you, Peter. I have the same sentiments, but I, I think we just can't look at this as a standalone capital item. When we're talking about purchasing a surf boat, we're, we're also talking about an operating budget to, and a program that goes along with it, qualified staff. So I think it's a bigger picture, and I hope that we'd be able to have that discussion in a, in a more context way, just versus purchasing of a boat. Thank you.
Alex?
I, I see Cory's hand is up first.
Just, this is a quick little comment, just to piggyback on Shereen's comments. Yes, I mean, the, you know, the operation of this boat is gonna be very interesting because, just because we have a certain type of vessel, we got to factor in, you know, not only staff, but qualified staff that can use this boat. An operator in a safe manner, for the, for the safety of, of operation of it, for their safety. It's a whole bigger conversation. And again, it's kind of something that we're being forced into because of the situation with the current relationship we have with the Coast Guard, which we are, we are still continuing to work on. And dialogue is still, you know, being maintained, thank God. But yes, there's a, it's a broader conversation. So, thank you.
Yeah, we, we felt that by bringing it up now, we'd at least be able to start that conversation. You know, recognizing that, you know, would be grant funded and it may take a couple of years. So, yeah, that was exactly the point to, to start that conversation.
Okay, thank you. Cory, your hand's back up again.
Really final, final, final snippet of comment. I know with the funding, though, I know when Marky's office, and we've had, you know, different delegates reach out to us on the conversations, and I believe the conver, from the sentiment that we've had from those meetings, funding for assets to some level would be supported by some of our delegates. So that element, we do have in our favor. So exactly the details, that's another story. But I do think there's some support if that is a component of, of the project that had that, have some financial funding available to the town if we were to pursue such a, an asset, so.
Okay, thanks, Cory. Okay, so Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I did have a question on the, the, the last paragraph there before the staff recommendation on the CCWRP for stormwater improvements, et cetera. The numbers have got kind of big there in that, that last sentence. We've identified projects totaling 3.2 million for the fiscal years '22 to '25. And, and the town match is estimated to be 729, but we're asking for 850? So just if someone could comment on what the numbers mean there and where they're coming from and going to. Thanks. I didn't understand it. Thank you.
I can start, if you'd like, is that, again, it's a 25% match, local match that Chatham would have to come up to. Right now, it's estimated at $729,000. However, because this goes out to FY 2025 and not knowing, you know, we've, we've built in some extra cushions, so to speak, in order to ensure that we have enough funds to meet that match should prices escalate over the next several years. And Bob, I don't know if you have anything to add? And, um, Bob, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, that, that's exactly what it is. We just tried to build in an escalator so we wouldn't get caught having to come back. You know, in a future year. Uh, the, the project total costs, those are based on data from. Um, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is basically the funder and operator of the Cape Cod Water Resource Protection Project. So, you know, none of the engineering's been done yet, no, no details or anything, but that's their estimates based on similar projects over the last ten years. Um, that have been funded through this program.
Yeah, I just, but what, what, what are the nature of the projects, I guess, Bob and Alex, if you would, just for a sec?
Uh, yeah, we have, um, one stormwater project at Little Mill Pond where Little Mill Pond and Homestead Lane meet right there at the town pier. Um, that where basically all the stormwater runoff goes down and impacts the shellfish resource. Uh, that's one. We're also looking at a wetland restoration project. Um, and I knew the third one was going to slip my mind, which it did. Oh, the Fish Passage at, uh, Route twenty-eight where the, uh, you go from Riders Cove. Um, up into Stillwater Pond. And that one, that one is currently in design. With Mass DOT providing some of the design money for that one. Um, so that's a joint project between the town, Mass DOT. Um, the Division of Ecological Restoration at DEM. As well as the Cape Cod Water Resource Protection Project. And that's generally. The way these projects have worked out is it's a joint project to try to leverage. Um, everybody's funding because nobody's got enough money to do the entire project necessarily. But by leveraging it from various agencies, we can usually make this happen. Uh, as, as I noted in here, we've already done at least one of these projects, which was Oyster Pond Furlong. We did that, that was the stormwater component of that was funded by. The Cape Cod Water Resource Protection Project, but we did it as part of this, the wastewater project. Because we were already digging up the road anyway. So it made perfect timing. But the town ended up, uh, saving about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars because we were able to get construction funding. Through the Cape Cod Water Resource Protection Project. So that's what we do with a lot of these projects. And we'll do a similar thing with the one on Little Mill Pond. Because we're, we're trying to match that up with the rehabilitation of the Mill Pond Pump Station. When we're going to be digging up the road right there anyway. We can go ahead and put the stormwater improvements in and get those funded by the outside agency.
Okay, thank you, Bob. That's helpful.
Uh, thank you, Jeff. Before I go to Dean, you, you, you would envision the way this would go is that each of those projects would be separate. And they would come at, uh, probably at different times only because of the requirements of what you need to do for engineering, or would they all come at once?
No, they would be, they would, as Alex indicated, these would be spread out until FY twenty-three, generally one project a year. Because this, this program funds projects in all fifteen towns across the Cape. So, you know, they don't load any one town in a particular year. So more than likely one project a year over the next three.
All right, thank you, Dean. Uh, yeah, much.
Alex, um, thank you, Peter. All right, so we're going to anticipate, uh, requests to place an article for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars this May? And if so.
Yes.
Where, what's, where's the funding coming from there?
Uh, free cash.
So it's not a borrowing?
It's not a borrowing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Alex?
Uh, we, we have asked the, the board, um, vote to place the capital dredging article and make a recommendation on that article as well. Um, as that is sort of an annual article that we've had over the past several years.
Okay, do you have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I move we placed. I move we place the capital dredging article for three hundred thousand from free click, free cash as has been presented in the packet. For the annual town meeting upcoming.
Uh, second?
Second.
Second.
Second, Shereen, let's take a vote. Uh, Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And now we need a, a vote to put it on the, uh, annual town meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend this article to town meeting.
Okay, second?
Second.
We have a second. Okay, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Hi.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alex?
Okay, thank you. I'll see if I can get myself back up here.
Okay.
And, uh, onto public safety. Right, so the public safety, um, department, oh. Public Safety Department is, uh, can everyone see that? Section two of the budget book? And that's, um, police, animal control, um, the fire department, emergency management, uh, Cape and Islands. Uh, emergency management and oil pollution control, a small, um, budget article. Again, um, level staffing except for the fire department is requesting, um, two firefighters and a, um, part-time administrative assistant. Uh, this is just the numbers, the raw numbers for each of the different divisions under the Public Safety Department. So I'll move right into the changes of note. Um, again, uh, two full-time equivalents, so two firefighter EMTs. And then a part-time, um, administrative assistant for fire department. Um, the request is being made. Um, especially for the, um, administrative assistant to free up the chief and the deputy chief's time, um, rather than doing paperwork and payroll. Uh, putting invoices, et cetera. Um, they would like to have a part-time administrative assistant to assist with those tasks. Um, some of the other increases under the Public, um, Safety Department are the, um, overtime costs. Again, that's due to usually the cost of living increases that we've seen over the past several years. Not that they're incurring more overtime, but as salaries go up, um, the overtime rate goes up as well. And then we do have, um, some new recruits that we're looking for in both, um, the Police Department. And the Fire Department, so that will, um, cover some of the training costs as well as uniform costs. And, um. The Emergency Management is seeing a slight increase as well. Um, but Cape and Islands EMS and Oil Pollution Control are all level funded. And I think the, um, Fire Department, um, again, um, would give them, right now they have, um. Twenty-eight firefighter, this would be for twenty-eight firefighter EMTs. And then two and a half administrative positions, um, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And I see Cory's hand is up.
Yeah, just before we go there, Cory, uh, just a comment. You, uh, you're on eighteen, right? That's where you want to be. Uh, just, we keep, uh, but in any case, we looked, we looked at, uh, the, uh, the, these numbers, uh, previously. Uh, we had a little long discussion on that. Um, I think there was, there's support for that, but let me go to the board anyway. Cory and then Dean.
Uh, thank you, Peter. Um, I'm just going to speak on the fire budget and the increase on the, uh, FTEs. Um, I've always been very supportive of our fire departments. Um, not only are the men and women who work in this department. Uh, go above and beyond their duties, um, on the clock. I mean, they do more public outreach and community involvement and. You, you name a charity, you're going to find at least one or a group of them there. Um, I mean, they, we're, I'm very proud to have these people represent the town of Chatham. Um, you know, I, I like our staff regardless, or, or in general, but, uh, the Fire Department, uh, has always kind of been. Um, one that I've been very drawn to, um, you know, I've seen things that they've done with charity events and. Polar plunges and, uh, uh, meal, meal chains and, uh, you, you name it. They, there's, they're, they're, they're out there reaching out a hand. And, um, I think, uh, adding the FTEs, um. For, you know, from the mechanics of it are good, uh, but I just think it makes it operational, uh, better. I know the chief is on, I'll let him speak more to the operations of it. But I do think, uh, this is, this is well, um. A wise investment in our, in our community operations, um, by supporting something like this. So I'm all, I'm all on for this one.
Thank you, Cory. Let me run down to Dean and then Jeff unless the chief wants to speak, but you, uh, you want to wait for these guys, chief?
I'll wait if there's any questions.
Okay, all right, so, uh. I said Dean, right? Yeah, Dean.
Thank you, Peter. Hi, Chief. I, I just had a question. Uh, we talked about, um, overtime last time, so I don't need to get into that, but can you explain that? In the, um, department detail, there's a category called capital outlay. It shows, um, the actual in twenty twenty at two hundred and eight thousand and then it dipped considerably. To ninety-seven thousand in twenty twenty-one. The budget request is two thirteen. Can you tell me what, what this is? I'm not sure what, what capital outlay relates to. I just really want an explanation as to what it is and why there would have been such a dip in. Yeah, maybe Alex.
Yeah, that is the lease payments that we make on the, um, fire pumper. So rather than purchasing it outright, um, we have it as capital outlay in the operating budget.
Okay, okay. I'll just make the general comment. I'm very supportive. Cory's got into it in some detail. Uh, I, I don't think we're going to take votes on individual. Department budgets. We, we take a vote on the entire municipal budget, once, once we get the schools into, but we're very supportive in these two, these. Two departments in particular, the Public Safety Departments, the Emergency Management Department also. If you do have a question on that, maybe I should ask that question now on Emergency Management. Um, just curious as to, uh, that's in the packet. Is, is Casey, uh, a contract person or is he an employee? Um, I wasn't quite sure what his role. What's, what his standing is with the town? Is he, is he full-time or part-time or?
He's sort of a, a stipend employee, I would say. Um, is that he gets a certain amount of money on a bi-weekly. On basis, so, um, it's the amount of hours that are necessary to accomplish the job.
All right. Does he get benefits?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
And I, I, go, go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, I just wanted, since you were on the Emergency Management, you'll see that there was a, a line item for temporary wages. Um, what we did was we put in, uh, some money for the interns. Right now, we, we haven't paid the interns and. We asked a lot out of them. You know, most, most of the time they're commuting from Mass Maritime and, you know, it's, it's. We've gotten really good candidates. We've been lucky so far, but I think we'll get even better ones if, and that's just a fifteen dollar an hour while they're doing their two hundred forty hours. So. You know, that's, that's something that's different in the budget, but it's actually, the budget stayed level, um, because we took it from other areas that we didn't think that we needed now, so.
Okay. Is that like a cooperative program like you have up at Northeastern? Is it comparable to that?
No, it's, um, when, when the rest of the college goes out to sea, um, the Emergency Management people do internships. So we, we tried to grab either facilities people or Emergency Management people and, um, you know, they've. Uh, other departments have looked at them now too. It's become a, a very successful program and Mass Maritime's really on board with Chatham, so. Um, I, I want to, I want us to be the place that they look to go to.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's very true. Their Community Development and their, you know, number of places would say, they, they, they provide a hundred and fifty percent, really.
Yeah, we get a lot of bang for our buck, especially so far because it hasn't cost us anything.
All right, Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Just a quick one. I am fully in favor of the, the two FTEs, the two and a half FTEs for the Fire Department, but we had a, quite a discussion. Last time we chatted about actually being able to fill these positions. So a, any, any more thinking on how we're going to go about. Filling the ones that we posted last year and then going forward for a couple more here. Uh, I, I don't like getting poached by other towns, which is, I think was your word, to be honest with you. So, I don't want to get poached again.
No, that's the, the word that I used and, you know, I'm happy to announce that, um, I had a, a, a final interview with another candidate yesterday. Um, we're going to be, um, offering jobs to two people for those first two positions. Uh, we have somebody that is, uh, somebody local that's in the Fire Academy right now. Um, and hopefully he'll be ready for July one, so we'll still have one other person. Um, for the, if, if these positions are funded, so, um, the future's looking bright.
Well, good. That's good news. Thank you. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? That's it. Okay, Alex, anything?
One, one thing, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the, you know, we, we've go, always gotten tremendous support from the Selectment and the Finance Committee and. You know, our firefighters do a lot of great things in the community, but, you know, I, I think one of the reasons that. There's some of the buy-in is the support that they get from the community and from, from you people. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank, thank them too. Uh, any, any else? Okay, Alex?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to see if I can present again and hopefully go right from the capital budget. And no, of course not. So, uh, because this is a change and it actually has to do with public safety and. So can we all see that? Um, so the FY twenty twenty-three capital plan, we've talked about some of the items under each of the, um, different departments. Um, is now at two million, four hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. And that's an increase of seventy-five thousand dollars, um, since we last updated the board. And that is for generators. And I wanted to point that out because that is under the Public Safety Division. Department, rather. Um, we had a placeholder of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, but with some of the challenges that we had with generators recently, um, we're going to tap into the sum of, some of the available funds. To get those generators up and running. So we need to replenish those funds for FY twenty twenty-three. Um, so this, excuse me. Brings the, um, request for FY twenty twenty-three up to a hundred thousand dollars from twenty-five thousand. So I just wanted to, uh, make that, that clear to the board. So our capital plan, I know this is kind of difficult to see. Um, again, the different, uh, departments, general government, public safety. Community development, natural resources, public works without the water and the equipment. And the detail of the capital, uh, requests are all in the back of your budget book under section ten. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you're, um, on DPW, but we're moving on if there are no more questions.
I don't see any from the board. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, moving on to, um, other services under section eight. Um, this includes those items, um, such as employee benefits. And our insurances and the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund. Um, employee benefits are requested at five million, five hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. Um, for items such as, um, the major ones are our retirement assessment and health insurance. And then, um. Insurances are smaller amounts, uh, general liability, property and vehicle, flood insurance, et cetera. And the Fire Department's, um, Reserve Fund, the FINCOM's, uh, Reserve Fund Transfer. Um, again, most of these are staying fairly level for workers' comp, Medicare, unemployment and police and fire injury insurance. But our retirement assessment for Barnstable County is increasing and health insurance, um, the. Expected increase is a three percent increase, um, for next year. And I see Dean's hand is up.
Yeah, just, just want to make the comment that our property insurance has gone up as well, right, Alex?
That's correct.
And that's because the, I know my own property insurance went up because, and I was told the agent that, uh, has to do with the increased valuation of properties in the town of Chatham.
Uh, we have to have the evaluation done and yes, um, it went up quite a, a couple of years ago, our, our value went up. Um, and therefore that affects the, um, the increase on the, the insurance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So debt service, um, again, is, uh, debt service pre-approved, um, debt that the town has approved. Obviously, and this is principal and interest, um, for, um, FY. It's not forty-five million, but for FY, um, twenty twenty-three, I believe it's five million, fifty-four thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars. And then interest is, uh, one point five million. And then we have a placeholder for short-term interest, which would cover any bond anticipation notes as well as. Um, the loan administration fees through the Clean Water Trust. So the total for debt service for FY twenty twenty-three at this time is just over six point seven million. I do want to point out that the board, um, that the town will be going out, um, for refunding. Um, prior to March fifteenth, and that will come before the board, um, for approval on March fifteenth. So we're hoping that, um, to save over a million dollars, um, next year. So this budget may decrease. However, we will have to issue some new, um, debt as well to cover some of those items that won't be covered through the Clean Water Trust. So again, uh, we will be refunding our general obligation bonds from twenty twelve. So again, we will be refunding our general obligation bonds from 2012, as well as issuing some new bonds for some of the projects. And then we'll be presenting those to the select board on March 15th. And if there's no more questions on debt, again, we'll have an update on that. Some of the articles that are pending review, well, you've talked about the dredging and placed that, so we thank you for that. The surf boat, as we mentioned, would be a larger discussion, not just on the capital article, but on any other article, any other impacts of that as well. I just lost that, so.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? I want, I'm going to ask you one. I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. In, under, under debt, we, we received funding from the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. We've talked about this a number of times and, and it's 6 million plus a little bit. And, and has that been applied against the charts that you show in here or do we have to wait for that longer?
Yes, that has not been applied to the charts yet. So once that comes in, that will, we can put that in for each of them. That's under the wastewater. That's all for wastewater projects.
That's right. Yeah. And I guess there were some, there were some other funding for out-year, but that was, that was said we were going to get, which came to like another $3 million. But I guess, what's the process on that? How is, how is that going to work?
We had to give all of our wastewater debt to the, the Cape Cod Islands Water Protection and through the provisions. So we listed all our outstanding debt and then what we're approved for in the future. So the items that have already been approved by the Clean Water Trust, because they will not fund any, any debt that's not eligible for the state revolving fund or through the Clean Water Trust.
Okay, I get it. Yeah. All right, there's Jeff and then Dean.
Just a couple of comments, I guess. Look forward to the 15th, so we're going to save a million bucks, Alex. So I'd like to hear that when we refund those, those notes. That's good stuff. And then I'm glad Peter asked about the 6 million bucks from the Cape, Cape and Islands Water Protection. That's going to go against all water debt, though. That's not going to, we can't apply that anywhere else, right? Is that correct?
It goes towards wastewater debt, yes.
Wastewater debt, okay, all right. And then Alex, if you would, just comment, if, maybe we're not there quite yet, but if you would comment on, you know, the overall position we are in terms of our ability to borrow, I think it's a fascinating number. If you just walk through those for a second, I think it'd be helpful to folks.
Yeah, in your packet on page four, we have the, the debt limit, which shows how much debt the town could issue under Mass General Law. And it's based on our FY 2020 equalized valuation, which was just over $7.9 billion. And so then 5% of that is 395 million. And then we take, we have to deduct our outstanding debt, the principal, as well as our short-term debt and whatever the town has already authorized but hasn't issued yet, to give us a total debt number of, this is approved and issued debt, 152,562,801. And then we take off the, what's outside the debt limit, which is typically water debt, which leaves us the amount available debt to issue just under $246 billion we could issue in debt. We will not issue that in one year. That would be impossible, but we do have plenty of capacity to issue debt should we need it.
Thanks.
Dean, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Alex. Apropos of that question and your response, I think it would be helpful because many folks are concerned about debt in the town and I, it's a very understandable concern and we all share that. But I think if you have a slide that illustrates what you just said, that is presented to town meeting, whenever we're being asked to vote on a borrowing, a significant borrowing for one of these separate articles. I think that would be helpful and also to present it to the finance committee because they have in the past expressed that. And, and I suspect the, the percentage of available borrowing will increase significantly once you factor in the 2021 valuation of the town, which I think is going to be even higher than it was in 2020. Given, given that. But the, the question I had was, your last slide, which disappeared from the screen very quickly, had some other separate articles on there. One was $750,000 for housing. I wondered what that was.
We just felt that it was prudent to put a placeholder in right now for housing, both affordable and/or attainable housing, with a focus. And since we have availability of free cash, this could be outside the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or possibly for another, you know, should a piece of property become available that we'd want to use for, for attainable and not necessarily affordable housing.
Okay, but you'll be coming forward with an article for us to consider that?
We will. All these, we're still crafting them.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Anything else, Alex?
No, just thank you. If you have any questions, you know, I'm happy to answer them and we'll be presenting to the finance committee. Both, you know, biweekly, usually we're presenting the different departments to the finance committee for their review in advance of their first recommendations to the board.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to our next agenda item, which is the referral of the Protective Zoning Bylaw to the planning board. Let me make a comment upfront because of some of the comments that were made ahead of time by the public, just for informational. First of all, just on process, any zoning land use bylaw has to go to the, to the planning board for public hearing. Just the rules. Last week, we saw four articles to refer to the planning board. Three of them were initiated within the planning board. The fourth one was initiated by the Historic Commission. This, this bylaw land use by the Airport Commission is same as the Historic Commission. It comes to us for referral and then we can vote to move it over there, but it has to go through a public hearing. It will go, all those, all those articles go over to the, to the planning board. They then get a public hearing. They, there's a vote by the planning board on whether to approve, disapprove, or what their, their feeling is. And then it comes back to the select board for a discussion on whether we're going to support it or not. So that's the process. That hasn't changed. If I missed anything, you can speak up. Another thing I'm going to mention, and I wasn't sure, and I've had this pulled up, has to do with the runway protection zone, why it was ignored or whatever. It really hasn't. And I, and I'll, I have something that was, that was provided to a, to an individual in the public back in 2016. They made a number of requests to the, to the FAA, or a number of questions to the FAA from 2014 through 2016, and then, and then continue on. Let me, let me just read what, what FAA said about around, around the airport and what Chatham has done. And this is not different than other airports. I'm not sure why I understand that the runway protection zone has changed. Some, you know, maybe, maybe somebody could mention that, but I talked to it when we, we get in more to this, but let me just read that. It says, and this is, I'm taking pieces of it, and if you really run to read it, it's been given to the planning board. And it's also, I guess, has been placed with, at the charter review. It says, although residential development around airports is not generally compatible with normal airport operations, Chatham Airport has been surrounded by residential development since its extent, inception. The town has implemented a number of actions, including the adoption of approached protection areas in chapter 100. Airport approach protection, and they link a couple of things that protect the airport. Let me get down to their, their bottom line. Conclusion. The historical mapping and current zoning bylaw airspace protection and easement acquisitions the airport has purchased over time indicate the airport has actively addressed, to the extent reasonable, item, the, and is, is in compliance with its grant assurances. The channel Chatham is in compliance with the grant assurances. This has been around for a while. When I was on a planning board and I hit it this way, you understood there was a runway protection zone. And the air, the airport, I mean, the FAA was responsibility to, to, to make sure that we're in compliance, was completely, I would say, they were, they, they understood what was going on, like they do at other airports. And as was brought up now, there's a need, a greater need because of what has occurred in our town and the questions that are brought up and the, and interest that we really need to have a runway protection zone. Now, the merits of that will go to the planning board, come back to us. So, let's see. Let me go to Mike Galen. Huntley isn't here. He's unavailable, so.
Peter, you just mentioned in, in your, the monologue you just did, you questioned whether the, whether the runway protection zone has changed in size. It has not changed in size in recent years, and there are no plans for anything at the airport that would create any kind of change in the size of the runway protection zones as they now exist.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you were anticipating any additional, any additional comment from the vice chairman, but I did have a couple of questions. First, thank you for explaining the process because that was, that question was asked by Ms. Dern in the public comment section. I do have a question for you, I guess, Peter, as former chair of the planning board. If, if the planning board, after, they have to hold a public hearing. So if, if after the public hearing, they choose not to present that bylaw to, to town meeting, then the, the option available, if someone wanted to get the issue before town meeting, an option that would be available would be a petition article, right? Like a petition article, and if town meeting approved that, that would go back to the planning board. I guess would have to come to us first. We would refer to the planning board, so it would be delayed.
And then it would have to come back to us.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. It looks to me like there is a, an inconsistency on the, the date. It's on the, in the article itself, section F2, the location, refers to a zoning map dated May 14th, 2022. I assume there'll be a map attached. If you look at the map that's in this article, it says March 20, March 2022, so someone needs to adjust that. That parent discrepancy, if there is a discrepancy.
Right.
Second question is, and I didn't check this, but maybe either you or Cory know off the top of your head. Under prohibited uses under G, it says, it refers to heights exceeding the limits established in the general bylaw. What is the limit? Is it in the general bylaw? Is it 25 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet?
Two and a half feet, 30 feet. I mean, two and a, yeah. It's, it's 30 feet. Okay, two and a half stories is what.
And then the final question is in the explanation in the fifth line, it refers to design aircraft. What, what does that mean?
Listen, Mike, you want to answer that?
Size of the RPZ. Based upon the design.
Design aircraft is the, is a designation used in preparing the airport layout plan for the airport. And in our case, it's basically the, the largest airport making regular operations at the airport.
What would that be?
And by that would be with a minimum of 500 operations annually. And it's a B1 plane right now, equivalent to a twin-engine beachcraft.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. There any other questions? This is, this, this runway protection zone that has been laid out was the one that was, it's been, it's about eight acres. There's a question of whether or not it should be changed or not, but that, that requirement is of FAA. Are any other questions? Mike, your hand's still up. Do you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That will not be changed, just to clarify again. There is nothing that would change, even if we went to a different design aircraft, a larger one, it would still be the same RPZ.
Yeah, there's a, there was, there's a question out there by, by some, and it has, it doesn't, it doesn't affect us here, that there's a way to reduce the, reduce the runway protections though by reducing the length of the runway that the airplane can land at, so that the RPZ could be shortened. That is something that is not, the Airport Commission can't do it, as far as I understand. Neither can the select board. That, that's something that FAA would have to consider. And that's not where we are here. We have to, we have to deal with what is right now. Right?
That's correct. That's displacing the threshold of the runway is the phrase. And it is in the hands completely of FAA. And as an aside, we have been told on several occasions, and that's a quote, non-starter, as far as the FAA is concerned, for a variety of reasons. They have no plans or indication that they would even entertain that.
All right, well, that's not really part of this discussion. It could be, yes, I brought up it at the planning board. Do we have any other questions or concerns on this? It's, it's not like, no, anyway, it's, it's, it's what is. It has to be formalized, that's all. Dean? You're having a good day.
I move, I move referral of this article to the planning board for public hearing pursuant to the general laws.
Second. Okay, do we have a second? Do I hear a second?
Cory, second.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's take a vote. I'll start with Jeff.
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Next up is a vote to engage a legal counsel for the Airport Commission. We had an interview earlier before the, the board. Any comments or, or questions by the board? Okay, so Dean's hands up first.
Mr. Chairman, I was very impressed with the interview. I, I move to engage legal counsel for the airport and authorize the town manager to sign the engagement letter with Anderson and Krieger LLP.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second. I was impressed as well. Second, yeah.
Any comments, Jeff? Okay, let's, let's take a vote. I'll start with Cory.
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much. And next up is the administrative order number five, filed by the, by the town manager. And we had discussion on this previously. We've had discussion during the budget preview on a couple of them right now. Any other comments or questions for the town manager? If not, go have a motion.
Mr. Chair, do you, I'm happy to provide just a little more context. If that's okay, I appreciate it.
All right, go ahead. It's fair because, you know, we've heard it a lot, but go ahead. This is, we should do that for the public.
Yeah, so I filed the administrative order to create a Department of Community Services back on January 21st, 2022. Before that, we had a meeting on January 4th where I presented a draft administrative order. And I wanted to note what's changed from the order that was filed, from that, what was discussed on January 4th. So essentially, what's changed is that I'm only creating a Department of Community Services, and that's led by the Community Services Director, who would also serve as the COA Director or Senior Service Director, however, that's rebranded. And that will be a direct report to the town manager. And then a Recreation and Beaches Director, who will report to the Community Services Director. And both members will remain part of the leadership team. So the director. So the director of community development will retain her current functions and will not lead the department of community services. And also in light of your comments received at the January 4th meeting, I'm not proposing a new assistant town manager position at this time or this year. So I just wanted to note that. And as you already know, the oversight of the grounds and operations, parks, grounds and operations is already done by the department of public works. That was done in administrative for about a year and a half ago. So I wanted to note that. And then I just wanted to provide some more information about the director of community services and so they, that person will fulfill the duties of the COA director and remain a direct report to the town manager. That direct reporting relationship was created in 2016 when the COA director had reported to the human cer, human resources director. And with that vacancy, Mandy Speakman at that time had reported directly to me and also took on additional roles and duties for the human services committee. So also helped with the childcare voucher, establishing that program and that network. So, so that's just important to note is the COA director positions, there's a couple that are open right now on Cape Cod. And what I've done, what I've done through my research and on Cape and off Cape is to see that many towns are moving towards a department of community services that will, it's, it's a promotional opportunity and a great recruitment tool for a COA director and a really great career path to serve the entire community. So the community as a whole and coordinate directly with recreation and have a robust recreation and cultural program that will be at the community center. And that's where the recreation and beaches director will reside at the community center and still manage that. And sorry, just looking at my notes, I provided an organizational chart in the administrative order that hasn't changed. And as I had mentioned before, both positions will remain part of the leadership team. They'll participate in my weekly department head meetings, and I'll continue to have one-on-one meetings at locations, their locations in between, or actually every two weeks. As I meet with the department heads biweekly. And then both positions will be recruited. I'm looking to do a robust recruitment that will be concurrently posted internally per the collective bargaining agreements for that position, as well as target professional associations, Cape-based associations, and really try to get out there and as soon as possible because there are already two other COA director vacancies, and there's some upcoming vacancies in recreation and beaches. So we want to try to get the person recruited as soon as possible. The fiscal impact is noted in the administrative order as well as the agenda report, that it's a net savings of about $24,000. So the director of community services slash COA director or senior, senior services director is upgraded from a grade eight to a grade 13. And the recreation and beaches director is downgraded from a grade 15 down to a grade 11. And again, both of those positions are part of our leadership team. And one of the reasons we placed this article on the agenda was at the request, request of the COA board chair, as well as trying to get a recruitment started as soon as possible. So if the board decides to take no action, the order will expire on February 26th and become implemented. But I'm looking tonight for the board to take favorable action to affirm the administrative order, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I see a couple of hands up. I'm just going to make a comment since we, we looked at this a number of times. I asked a number of questions beforehand, and, and just my early take is, I'm not early, it's my final opinion is, you know, this is an evolution of, of an organization given to meet the needs that we have. A single focus, I, I think it's important to have a single focus on, on our social and recreation needs. I mean, we, we, we even looking at COA combined with, with community services, and it just, you know, that, that's a physical thing potentially. But, but in, in reality, that's, that's something that, that, that you see throughout many communities, but you, you hear the comment, you know, 60 is the new 30. I don't know if that's quite the case, but it's close. I mean, we have very active, very active people, and especially here on Cape Cod, and we should, we should put that all together. I mean, it, it just makes sense. And finally, I don't see it as a, as a change. Well, it isn't. You maintained a relatively flat organization. That is, the number of the number of, of direct reports to you really hasn't changed. And what it's done is it removed a, a number of maintenance and, and you move the number of maintenance and so forth, people around. I thi, I think the organization makes sense, but let me go up to Dean, Corey, and then Jeff. Dean. Up, we got you again, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Jill, for laying all that out. The, the council and aging met yesterday. Peter covered the meeting for me. And I would like to move quickly on this per the request of the chair of that board, as well as the sentiment of, consistent with the sentiment of that board generally. I, I want to just make five points. I did share them with Jill over the weekend, and she really did outline them, but I think it really lays out for me as I read the, the order, what the order does and why I support it. At the risk of being repetitive, but these are the highlights for me. The council on aging director previously reported directly to the town manager, and with the new title, will continue to do so. Secondly, the new title for the council on aging director reflects the additional responsibilities that the previous incumbent handled, as well as some additional areas, and is essential for recruiting purposes. Three, the new council on aging director position will be posted and recruited. Four, although the new recreation and beaches director will report to the community services director, that person will continue to be part of the town manager's leadership team and will participate in the town manager's biweekly department head meetings. And five, the new recreation and beaches director position will be posted and recruited. So that to me is the sum and substance of what the town manager is proposing. I don't think it's particularly dramatic. I think it's, it will be helpful to the provision of services to the town and to the people of the community. So I'm going to support the order and, and taking a vote tonight to expedite the ability to recruit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Corey?
Thank you, Peter. No, at, at first, when I saw this, I was a little bit mixed about it, but kind of sitting back and reflecting on it, I've come to grips with a couple of thoughts. First, the director of community services, which is basically a rebranding, rebroadening of the old COA, you know, Mandy's old position, I think does position the town to recruit the best candidate to fill that position. If we had kept it as it was, a little narrow, frankly, with the stuff that's going on with the COA and the, you know, the, where, where we're going to finally end up landing with a facility and programs, I think would be a, a heavier lift to fill that position and recruit for it. So I think this is a better, better path for the town to take to bring in someone who can help in that area and others. It'd be an asset to the, to the staff and the, and the town. The director of park and recreation, we all know was triggered by, you know, Lee Dan Tobin leaving. Dan had many hats. He, he, he was with, with the town for quite some time and, and, you know, segmenting a lot of the things he used to do to different areas. I understand the philosophy behind it. At the end of the day, it's going to be successful if two things happen, proper communication, which hopefully that will, will happen, and proper oversight. And it, it looks like we have the components in place that we can achieve both of those. And I, I think, I think that we have the potential to make this thing work. I guess, like I said in the beginning, I was mixed, but I, I can, I can see myself supporting this moving forward, and I'm trying to try to be as optimistic about it as possible that we could succeed in these two areas. So, thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Jeffrey?
Yeah, thanks, Peter, and thanks, Jill. And I am supportive as well. I think the reorg marries and mirrors the priorities of the board and what the board believes are the priorities for the town. I, I like the director of community services position. I think it comprises, I think it meets the needs of the town, to be honest with you. And, and I appreciate the fact that we saved a few, few bucks in so doing. So I'm excited about getting going and recruiting, and I'm going to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Shereen?
Ditto on everybody's sentiment. The vision and delivery of the services makes really perfect sense in today's times, and I think this was a really good move. I'm going to be supporting.
Thank you, Shereen. So could we have a, a motion, excuse me, to affirm the administrative order number five filed January 21st, 2022?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. We'll get, take it for a vote. Let me start with Shereen.
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Excuse me, Jeff. Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jill, for reminding me to say something.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure, Corey, you're welcome. Okay, let's now move to vote, to committee appointments for, that we come up with. We have a couple, excuse me, be over. We have appointments, the following appointment, one is for Parks and Rec. One is for the Board of Health. Okay, Shereen?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Tanya Khalil to the Park and Rec Commission until June 30th, 2024, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Okay, do we have a second? Second. Do we have any others? See none? Okay, let's take a vote. Let's go with Dean.
Aye.
Corey?
Yes.
Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And chair says aye. Next up is, let's see, Board of Health, one alternate vacancy until June 30th, June 30th, 2022. Shereen, I see your hand up.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Carol Gordon to the Board of Health as an alternate until June 30th, 2022.
We have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. All right. That's it. Okay, let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Yes.
Shereen?
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you all. Good candidates, again. And finally, is the town manager's report, monthly report for December. Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a lot of what's in the cover page to the monthly report you've seen already, but I did want to highlight the longevity of a few of our employees. For January, Stuart Smith, our harbor master, will be in his 37th year of service to the town, so.
Starting as teenagers, I imagine.
Yes. A lot of longevity in natural resources that it also includes Ted Keon as our director of coastal resources, who's been, been here for 24 years. And then we have Officer Bill Little, 19 years, David Laurie, a senior equipment operator for 19 years. Jerry Friend, our special equipment operator, so DPW is well represented in our longevity. And then I do want to note Mark Helena as a police chief for 16 years. As you know, we delayed his retirement until June 30th. So Mark had thought about retiring on March 15th, and because there's some more work he'd like to get done to comply with the new post requirements with police reform, accreditation and so forth, we've agreed for him to stay on until June 30th. So I just wanted to note that, and, and it's exciting for us and exciting for the department. And then it serves as a nice base for the next chief to take over, and I can talk about that in another conversation that we had with the board, and, and you'll have to approve that as well. So there's that. And then you have the department reports, almost a year-end report for many of the departments. So if you look at some of the data, meeting data and so forth, that's in here, and it was the basis for the annual report for 2021. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Jeff, anything from the, Shereen, go ahead.
I don't have any questions, Jill. I just really appreciate this report, and I can't tell the public how much they should really check in on this report from time to time, just to see the scope of services that the town is providing for, for everybody. And I, it gives great stats and information on revenue and all kinds of things. Shellfish, how much shellfish is being brought in, what kind of inspections are going on, even a sort of a police and fire report, if, if that's something you're into. I just think it's really, really helpful for people who might not or might have a question about what, what, what's happening internally with the, with the town. So thank you very much for the report.
Shereen, Jeff?
Yeah, I ditto Shereen's comments. I find it full of information, and the townsfolk, if they're interested in the towns business, it really is a real good compendium of all sorts of information. That's, that's one comment. Another comment is, you know, we take a lot of the efforts from our, for our town staff at time for granted. So I just want to highlight Alex and Dr. Bob and Jill. You know, Alex whips through this stuff with a lot of confidence and a lot of intelligence, and I've sat through an awful lot of budget presentations in my career, if you will, and, you know, she does an excellent job. So does Dr. Bob, so does Jill. So I just, you know, just, just thank you. That's all. I mean, you, you kind of take it for granted, but I'll tell you, these people work hard. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else? All right. Not too bad. I thought we'd be later. Good. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Second. Okay, Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Good night, Chatham. Thank you all for watching. Great meeting again.